Were you already aware of that?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So you can speak to it very easily.
If you have it, I'll hand it over to you.
Sure. Great.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. We're about to start the agenda meeting for the Morrisville Borough. It's February 20th, 2018. If you all rise—
Page is 13.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it's the 13th of February 2018. I'm sorry. If you could all please rise just for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. If we could have a roll call, please. Yes.
Here.
Here.
Corinne Cronin.
Here.
Danielle Anderson.
Here.
Ted Parker.
Here.
Your company, Tom?
Katie Smith.
Yes.
Michael Baker.
Here.
Your solicitor and your manager.
I got those shady suspects.
You ready? First, as we begin the meeting, I would just like to make an announcement. We—I'd like to inform the public and as well as state for the record that an executive meeting of the council was held on February 12th, 2018, at the Borough Hall for the purpose of reviewing the resumes for the full-time Borough Manager position. The meeting began at 7:00 PM and adjourned at 7:25. All council members were in attendance. Oh, I'm sorry, except Bill Pepitone. I'm sorry. With exception to Bill Pepitone. I'll write that down. Thank you for correcting that. I thought you were going to say something.
Before we get into the substance of the agenda, we have a guest visitor.
Okay.
Do you mind if we started with him?
No, that's fine.
Jason—I assume everybody knows Jason from Portnoy. He's been here numerous times. He's our main person on the account, and he's here to talk about— One, I guess you've recently seen the 2017 year-end report from Portnoy. Two is Jason has another idea for us to consider. And there's another matter the solicitor was going to address, too. So Jason, go ahead, lead the charge.
Well, thank you for having me tonight. I had met with Mr. Mitchell last week and brought him an update on the collections of your delinquent solid waste fees, and he thought it would be good if I shared them with you and answer any questions you have. So I—I think you already have this, but I handed out it in your packet—the report. And this is—the collections through the end of 2017. You had turned over to Portnoy for collection throughout 2017, two different times, delinquent trash fees. The first notices went out this time last year, February of last year, and then a second batch of them went out in July of last year. And you can see from that report, we've collected $242,000 of the delinquency that was turned—of the $572,000 that was turned over to us for collection. So you can see—just through this report—you can see another 39 accounts are on payment plans with our office currently, and there's still 122 accounts that are in legal process with our firm. So I believe this was given to you already, and maybe it best if I just take some questions, you know, answer any questions you have.
If I may?
Mike?
Just for the purpose of the public, so they get to hear—the $242,000 that was collected, how much did the Borough pay for Portnoy services throughout that period as well?
Okay, so the Borough only pays to Portnoy $40 plus certified postage for that initial notice of delinquency. That's the only thing that you pay us, and that gets added to the delinquent bill so that you get reimbursed that amount. So you—if you look on the back of that, you paid us $11,994 for that certified mailing, and we've collected $6,557 of that. So you're out about $5,000 currently.
Thank you.
And that's still recoverable?
And—we're recovering it, yes.
Okay.
Everything else is—is passed through to the delinquent property owner, and they're responsible for paying those costs.
Anyone else have anything, any questions they want to ask?
So council is aware, we have turned over 2017's accounts.
Correct.
And we're also working, endeavoring at least, to turn over the remaining portion of the original portfolio—
Correct.
—to Portnoy. But while he's here, Jason has another idea for us to consider, and I'm not sure if it was taken into consideration as part of the original engagement of Portnoy, which is why I asked him to bring it up tonight.
So when I—when I met with Mr. Mitchell, I had mentioned that we do collect the delinquent school taxes for Morrisville, and I included their collection numbers in your packet as well. And I mentioned that that is one thing we could do as well for the Borough is collect your delinquent real estate taxes. There are some advantages to using our firm instead of the County Tax Claim Bureau for those collections. One of the—one of them is obviously the speed in collection. Their process is mandated by Pennsylvania statute that basically, when it becomes—it's billed, it becomes delinquent as of December 31st and is turned over to the county in January of the following year. Then sometime that year, the Tax Claim Bureau gives the residents a notice that it's delinquent. But then nothing happens until the following September. It goes up for upset sale. So basically, people have two years, and people get to know that they have two additional years to pay it. And then at that point, they can come in and pay a quarter of the delinquency and get an additional year. So—in essence, three years to pay their—their delinquency. Our process—you've seen it with the trash fees. It's the same exact process. We lien the property. We give them notice of that. If they don't respond to that, then we have the sheriff serve them with a writ, and that gets their attention. And then if they still would ignore that, we enter a judgment against them, and the final step in our process is to list the property for sheriff's sale. Of the 50,000 claims we receive in a year, about 1% get listed for sheriff's sale, and of that, it's like .1% that actually sell—that actually make it to the sale—to sell because mortgage companies pay it off or somebody with an interest pays it off before it gets to the sale. So I think last year, we actually exposed around 70 properties to sheriff's sale. So our process works. There's incentives all along the way for them to pay, and we offer payment plans. We offer hardship applications, which is an extended payment plan. If they meet, you know, the criteria for that, they have to be owner occupants in order to be—get a hardship, living at the property. So—so there's—that—that's one of the advantages. Another main advantage is that when you turn it over to the county, they take a 5% commission. So you're only getting 95% of the taxes back. The school district, by using us, they pass through the county's 5% commission, so they actually get 100% of their taxes back and pass through the 5% to the property owner, delinquent property owner. So that—that's an additional option for you to—to consider. So, you know, in addition to that, as—as Mr. Mitchell has seen, we remit weekly to you instead of—I believe the county does monthly. So everything that we collect this week, we will remit to you by Wednesday of next week.
Yes, they do see you regularly.
Yes, so the money's in your—your pockets quicker.
And this is an option—we're not pressing council for a decision tonight, but it's an option for the Borough to consider at some point if you choose.
It would be for next year. I—I believe you've already turned over this—
Yes.
—2017 to the county, so it would be for 2018, but—
Very nice. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I have a quick question. With the 100% the school gets back, does that mean your fees get added on top of that? So they pay 105%? I think you said, or something?
Right. It's the same process. So our fees are based on the action taken to collect. So that initial notice—if they pay as a result of that initial notice—which you'll notice on your collection report, on the—the footnote at the bottom, you can see number of files paid without any attorney fees, 67, about 25%. They've paid as a result of that initial notice, they've paid $45 additional. They've had no additional attorney fees. So as long as they contact us in response to that initial notice, it's—it's $45. But yes, if they—if they ignore and we proceed through the—the process, our fees are added as—as it goes through the process, each step of the process.
I think it's been very successful with the school, too, because I—I think you were already maybe at the school for a year, maybe a little bit more, when we had seen your—actually, a representative from your company when we were at the conference, and —and that's when we brought that information into the Borough. But I—I do believe it was working very well for the school also.
And—and another advantage to point out, as it reflects to the—the school district—I mean, if you look at their report, you can see in 2016, they turned over 132 delinquent accounts. In 2017, they turned over 125, and this year, they only turned over 116. So there's that incentive to pay current, and you'll—you know, we—most of our clients see a decrease in their collection—delinquent collection, which your school district has seen.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Well, thank you. Anyone else have anything?
I just have a quick question for Scott. Do you have a rough figure of, you know, what—what goes out for taxes a year that we don't get? Goes to the county?
Uh, no, I don't. I could get that for you.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'll take public comment. Is there—Virginia, is there a sheet there? Can I?
No one's on it?
Oh, what? Yeah. No, it's—okay. Okay, no public comment this time. We will be moving on to our—our minutes. This is just to set our agenda for next week, to add or take off. We can review the things that will be coming up. Out of the minutes, did anyone have any questions about the minutes that are being proposed here?
I don't recall getting 6A to—to review. We—we got it. I—we kicked it back, and I don't remember seeing the updated version.
Yeah, I—I didn't need it. It was supposed to go back and be revised, and we didn't get a revised version of that. Do you remember that?
No, that wasn't the January—that was not the reorganization meeting. On the last one, it was the December meeting. We did not have the January one at the last agenda, because I have—I never brought up the mistake that I found on the reorganization meeting.
That's what we're saying, was being revised. We didn't get the new revision on that.
It never made it here. I—I—I emailed a response when we got them, saying that this was inaccurate, and they were polled, I believe.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Because there was some verbiage that was—
So we have to have it looked at?
Question is whether or not it was left out.
And then, Daniel, you also had something for that same meeting, is what you're saying?
Right.
Could I be corrected?
On page four, underneath 6D, it says that I nominate Nancy Doreto Wilk, but I didn't say Nancy Doreto Wilk. I just said Nancy Doreto.
Okay, did you submit that into a change for it?
Right.
Yeah.
Got confused.
Probably, yeah, yeah. Okay.
So I just—I just wanted that fixed, because I didn't say Joan.
Okay. How about we'll put them in your Friday packet for review prior to Tuesday's meeting?
That's fine.
Okay. Also, the—I wrote a note here. I noticed that—and you could double-check this—the December 12th, 2017 meeting minutes were not voted on. They should keep—I reckon go back on the former agenda. Yeah, so check this. I don't think they were voted on. I do have a copy of them, but we'd have to check them, because they would have to be added then to this. Yeah, yeah, because I didn't see them. We voted a—a block of them last month, but I did notice that one was missing, so I looked it up, and I didn't see anything on the agenda. Yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm. Thank you. The next would be under our finance. You want to go? I said we didn't have a Treasury report yet, right? So it'd be—
It wasn't put in there.
Scott, do you want to talk about the authorization for the budgetary transfers?
Yes, the Treasury is going to provide—in fact, I think it was in your—your meeting packet—budgetary transfer to be done in order to pay Keystone Municipal Services, because in the budget, Keystone was not contemplated, so of course, we're going to have to pull that from salary.
Right. Okay, so this is authorizing that movement of the money to—to pay the bill?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, within the general fund, yeah.
Right. Okay. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Madam President, I do have a comment to make, because I—I want to—as we go through things, and this is specific to Keystone, I just want to make sure the public's aware of—of where we are with some things. So just to give the public a heads-up on cost for Keystone, because there was a question prior to hiring them, I just want to give some preliminary information that I requested for January. So the invoices that we got in our packet show for January, the cost was $11,057.50. The fees we billed against that were $6,339. So the cost for Keystone for the month of January was $4,718.50. Now, I say that because I want people to understand that there's still some things that we're working on, and Keystone's actually working on, to defray some more of that. Now, to me, that's not a horrible outcome, to be honest with you, because there's—there's always going to be a cost to code enforcement and responding to complaints. There's no offsetting fees for tho—for those activities. However, at $4,718.50, knowing that we are working on adjusting our fees to better cover those services, that this is a—a bottom line, I believe, of where we're going to be. Not only that, in the—in the event that it stayed flat, we would still be paying about $56,000 a year without benefits, without pension and long-term debt that's associated with—with an actual employee. And I will say that—and again, I got—I got a—a text today from one of my neighbors that dealt with code enforcement. The professionalism is at a very high level, and I can tell you, there's an individual in town that reached out to me today that is so grateful for the professional way they're being dealt with on—the issues that they're—that they're working on. So I just wanted to put that out there and let people know where we stood with them.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions on that? Okay, the next thing we would be looking at, which we'll get this week—we don't have today—would be your—your bill list and to pay the bills. After that is our reports on the administration and management, so it would be a manager's report. Anything you want to talk about?
I think the only item left over from the manager's report that council still wanted to have more discussion on was the issue of the line of credit, and whether you wish to do that tonight or another time is fine by me.
Okay.
I'd actually—and—and I guess we should talk to the Chair of this committee. I think we do need to put some parameters around it, and maybe that's a discussion for the upcoming Policy Committee.
Well, I—I think—to clarify the entire—the entirety of the issue, this is for emergency use.
Right.
This—it would be my recommendation that the resolution approving—obtaining it would require council authorization to access it, and I would hope that this council and future councils would have the fiscal discipline to avoid using it.
Understood.
Okay.
Is this something that would be separate from the TAN Fund?
Yes.
Microphone.
Oh, sorry. So this would be separate from the TAN Fund?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone want to discuss about whether we should work on that—to—to do that, to give the approval for that, or you want some more time to think about it? I—I personally think it's—it's a good idea. Like I said, as long as you have in the resolution, it states that it wouldn't be used unless it's for that emergency reason. They'd have to come through the council, whoever that is, to make sure that, you know, that it's being spent. So if the guidelines are put in there, I'd—I'd be okay with that.
It's something that costs you nothing unless you are in a position where you have to use it, and then it only costs you for however much you used, for however long you used it. Once you replenish it, it goes back to costing you nothing again.
Did you give us an amount of—a—I think you did the last time, right? About how much it was?
Yes, I believe I recommended a $250,000 amount.
Okay.
And is the rate variable on that, or is it—is it a fixed rate?
It's variable.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, then I'll ask the council, is it something you would like to entertain as a vote at the next meeting?
I would.
Yes, no?
I would.
Take a consensus on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, that's two. Mr. Parker? See, oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, absolutely.
See that? Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Didn't want to waste the solicitor's time on a resolution unless there was a consensus among council to proceed.
Okay. So if, like I said, if it's everyone approve it, and you want to have it added that night, we can do a contingent, or we can take it into the next meeting, if that's okay, as long as everyone is okay with doing that. Get a resolution drawn up first, we can all look at it. Okay, so we're approving. For the manager to do that, correct, everyone? Everyone say yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, Scott.
While we're on the manager's report, I—I'm going to kind of put you on the spot a little bit, Scott.
Okay. I wouldn't know what that felt like.
And the reason why I'm doing this is because if you don't know the answer, we—you still have time to get it for the next meeting, and it's—for the manager's report, if need be. So you've been here about six weeks at this point, and my understanding is there's been a couple of findings from—a—from an accounting perspective. Specifically, I'll—I'll ask about the cellphone bills that were being paid. Is there—is there anything that we can—that we can talk about at this point that we can put out to the public, so they're understanding what some of the findings are?
Well, the annual independent audit that was presented to council last year, that's no secret, it's public knowledge and public record, included approximately two pages worth of findings.
Right.
I don't think anyone's been tasked yet with addressing those items. It is on my to-do list to get to those issues. With regard to the cellphone issue you raised, I—I consider it to be a Mickey Mouse accounting item, but yes, there are—there were some former Borough officials with cell phones.
Okay.
There aren't anymore.
Okay.
Okay, good. Thank you for that. So another project that we were in the process of, and—and I know this is something that's near and dear to both Eileen and Corinne's hearts, is the sign—the signage for trucks in the first ward. My—can you—can you give us a quick update on where that was left off, where you took over, and was it moving forward when you took it over?
It is moving forward, and our Borough Engineer is here this evening, and I'd like for him to address that as part of his report. He's got a couple of items to discuss with you tonight.
Okay.
So if we could pause on that—
Sure.
—for just a minute—
Sure.
—and we'll get to him.
And—and I promise, there's only a couple more. The memo in our packets for $115,000 worth of vehicle purchases. In the budget meetings, there was clearly an amount that was put in the budget, $40,000 for vehicles.
Correct.
The—the information I got is literally asking to—or—I'm going to say, it's stating that we should take on long-term debt, three years, without council approval. Is that appropriate?
In my opinion, no, but the—the way this issue came about—I haven't had a chance to speak with council about this matter. We did, at the last minute, put it in your packet when it was sent over from the Police Department. The chief insists, and I have no reason to doubt him, that this issue was discussed at length during budget hearings at the end of last year, and that he was approved to proceed with this plan. I believe this was done in the past. I believe when it was done in the past, it was done—I don't want to say as an emergency measure, but out of urgent necessity, because the police vehicle fleet needed to be addressed immediately. This was raised to my attention because staff internally was not in agreement with the chief's assessment of his approval for this last year. So it was my decision for that reason and others, also the dollar amount involved in the multi-year budget commitment, to escalate it to council to find out from you folks directly how, if at all, you wish for us to proceed with this. So that's why I have it in your packet for discussion this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, since we're on that subject, I will say that during the budget meetings, the conversation that I had with the Chief of Police— conversation that I had with the chief of police when he was sitting next to me, and this issue was brought up, he, I think he's just under the misunderstanding that when we did the three purchase, lease purchases, is what they were for the police cars, it was correct, as Mr. Mitchell had said. The fleet had been depleted, they were getting a lot of repairs. A lot of us on the council had, the only thing we had questioned about was, we didn't really want all of the coverages to be expired at the same time. It was originally set up for that money to be put in the line of the police budget to make sure that there were availability of funds to replace a vehicle. And from what I'm understanding, back then, when I was on, it was one vehicle of the oldest amount of mileage and repairs that would be considered for doing that. But we did all, and I remember, vote for the one-time-only three-purchase-lease vehicles at one time. But the chief, I think, believes that that's something he's going to do every three years, is what he told me. And I said, no, it wasn't that agreement, it was just one time. So when the paperwork came, I was, it looks like they were already ordered, and I said to Mr. Mitchell, I said, I would really think that should be the brakes on that. Because I spoke with Mr. Mitchell about it, and I kind of feel the same way, with us transitioning and going through the budget and straightening some of these things out, really, we're not purchasing any big vehicles and big equipment. And I believe Mr. Mitchell had a conversation with the chief in the very beginning of the year, and explained to him, it wasn't that we're not buying a vehicle, it's just that he wouldn't buy any of those things for our side or their side like that in the beginning of the year. It's something that could come up for reconsideration in the fall time, after you've got your, we have no, our revenues in yet, so we're trying to get everything organized. So it's best for those type of purchases, like they used to be, to be after you know where you stand with your funds coming in, your revenues going out, and then make that decision. So it's not like you wouldn't reconsider that at that time. So that was our only question was, was we hopefully didn't order the cars, because I did explain that to him. I don't remember, I didn't see it in the minutes anyway, that there was any open conversation with the whole council about a decision to do that. And that's probably where the administration was like, we never knew that was happening again. So I'm glad that Mr. Mitchell put that in our packet, so it could be brought out for the council, for anyone else that wants to have a discussion about that. So I'll open the floor if anyone else wants to make a remark.
If I could just add on to your comments, it's not uncommon for any municipality in Pennsylvania to put off capital expenditures for vehicles or heavy equipment during the first half of the year, because, as you said, tax revenues aren't coming in yet. We don't know if our revenue projections for the year will hold true. We don't know what, you know, if our expense projections for the year are going to hold true. These are typically third, fourth quarter of the year purchases. But in my conversations with the chief in the short time I've been here, he shares, I think, all of our concerns, that some areas of the budget, particularly on the expense side, have been possibly underestimated. So I think he gets that a decision ultimately has to be made, and we have to give him direction on how we would like to proceed with these purchases, if at all.
Okay, so I'll ask the rest of the council, your thoughts on this.
I just don't feel like, right now, with not knowing how much of the money we have coming in, if we should be making any big purchases at this point, I agree with Mr. Mitchell here. I really don't feel that, at this time, we need to purchase three vehicles.
I agree.
Anyone else?
I don't think that we should purchase.
I'm sorry, I do think that later on, it should come back up.
Reconsider it.
And figure out what, what's the oldest vehicle that has to come out of rotation and have that vehicle replaced.
Yeah.
Because they do need.
Assessment, yes.
Right. And that's how the process was actually set up. Like I said, I was one that actually voted for that lease purchase with the three back then. And like I said, there was that debate back and forth, I remember very clearly, about the coverages and doing it all. But it was when a lot of money was being spent for Cornerstone, and there weren't any vehicles being bought instead, and the department needed that, so we did it. But it was, at that time, a one-time purchase. So like I said, personally for me, I have to agree, I think any kind of purchase like that, whether it's big equipment for us or any of that, we need to get our finances all in order, and know where we stand since we're making these transitions, and then revisit this in the fall time. And personally for me, I think we should just do the one and stagger them, so we do have the coverage on those cars. They're not all expiring at the same time. But that's just my personal opinion on that. So I think we need, though, to give the chief a direction, so that he knows where he is with that.
That's my feeling as well. I was going to say about the warranties running out all at the same time, and then in three years, or five years, whatever the warranty is, you'll have to go back and buy three more again. And it's just, it's, you know, in the borough, the same thing was done when they bought all their equipment at the same time. And now it's going to all expire at the same time, and we're going to have the same issue.
And Eileen was on the council at the time, so I remember the debate about it. And even the council president at that time was like, I'm not crazy about having all three of those coverages up at the same time. But we all thought it was the best for the department, so we did it. But it was a one-time, a one-time purchase, so maybe it's just a misunderstanding with the chief of police.
Is it safe to say that I can go back to the chief and say, we're not saying no, we're just saying, not right now, let's look at it later in the year?
Yes, and also, I guess the council needs to say, I, personally for me, I would not want to go back to the three lease purchase, and could we go back on the cycle of the one at a time, instead of tying them into next council's budgets for three years. It's not that money can't be set aside. If you emergency need one, that's absolutely, it makes sure the cars are covered. But I would really rather have them staggered. So I would just do the purchases the way we did do them. Opinion, everyone?
I agree.
Is there any way we could ask the chief, make sure that we get a list of the vehicles, the years, the mileage?
Yes.
Because I understand some of them are Crown Victorias, which hasn't been in production since 2011.
Right, one was already taken off the road.
Which make them obsolete, and at the point where, I mean, parts from the deal are going to become scarce.
Yeah, he did mention, in his letter, I believe, two of them. And the one Crown Victoria, I think, had been pulled off for transmission or something a while back.
For some reason, I thought there was another two or something.
Yeah, there's one, I think Mr. Mitchell said, had $170,000, so I'd say that's about time. But yes, absolutely, I know that on his report from the chief, we get like, I think we do, anyway, I remember seeing that the mileage is listed on that report each month. It just give a number of vehicles, so I don't know what that is. But I'm sure that he can give us a list of all that, and the mileage and all, but I think it should be reconsidered halfway through the year, not in the beginning, where we're trying to get everything in order. And like I said, on the borough side, the manager isn't even buying on this side, too. So it's not just the police side, our side, too.
I understand, but I mean, you know, if we have vehicles that are over five years old, they do need to be replaced, they can't be really used as frontline vehicles anymore. And I'd just like to get a better idea before we push anything off too long, and then not get to it, and leave the police force with, you know, vehicles that are aging, and basically putting us back in the same situation we were five years ago.
Right. Yeah, that's why I personally thought it was a great idea, to make sure there was something in the budget that could do the cars on a constant cycle, because they did go for too long, and it was costing more for repairs, and they were unreliable, and you just can't do that with the police department. So I just think it needs to be reconsidered in the fall time, get the information about those cars. So if everybody's in agreement with that, we could have Mr. Mitchell let the chief know that?
Yes.
Is that okay with everyone?
As long as we're also directing the chief to give us a proper vehicle list with the make, the model, the year, and the miles of it.
Mr. Mitchell?
He has that data, so I can, I'll speak with him about that when he comes back.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you, everyone, for that. Let me see, was there anything else, Mr. Mitchell, that's missing? You want to bring up?
Well, we have a number of guests with us on the action items, number nine. Could we perhaps jump to those, so we don't hold people up?
Yes, oh, absolutely.
And then I'll come back to another non-agenda item that we need to have a conversation about, and that's the Morrisville Little League issue.
Okay.
But if we could.
Nine B?
Perhaps do nine B, since Tom is here. Tom? Just to warn you, Tom, be brief. And we have a couple of new council members, so you might need to give us a little detail on how you work.
Okay, very good.
I'm used to you and what you do, but fill in some new folks.
Okay, very good. We met about a month ago and discussed a proposal whereby we would do our recycling performance grant application work for the borough, and at a, basically a nominal price, just to learn what we could do for you, show what we could do for you. And the fact that we work with a number of municipalities around this area, including Yardley Borough and Bristol Borough, and we put boroughs together with townships to increase their grant applications. The grant program was started a long time ago, Act 101, and I know that at some time, the borough did apply for those grants, I'm not sure that they have recently.
We have, and it seems they've been on the decline.
Okay.
That's one of the reasons why I wanted you to speak to council tonight.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I also understand, from our discussions, that the person who was doing it, that staff person is not with you any longer, is that correct? So you didn't have anybody to really do the work, and we prepared to step in and fill that breach. And we do a very thorough job in terms of gathering the data. We not only just get it from your contract hauler, but we find out who is collecting the commercial data, or, you know, collecting the commercial recycling. We go out to the actual businesses. As part of the services during the year, we do a free mailing to any list of businesses that you have, and remind them that they have an obligation to do recycling. So actually, in the second year, you'd probably do better, whether you do it yourself or retain it for a second year. The cycle on this is that there's a county form that's due March 9th, and we're already collecting data for that for the municipalities. And in light of our discussions, we've included Morrisville Borough in that data collection. So if you authorize us to proceed, we'll certainly, you know, file that for you, and as part of our process.
You do this for just about every municipality I know around here?
We do, yes.
Like 65 of them, I believe?
We have 67 municipalities, we do it for 20, now 21 boroughs. We just added Norberth Borough under the same terms that we're offering to you.
And we were talking about a one-year trial.
One-year trial, $1,200.
See how it goes, and if we liked the result, and we could renew for a second year.
Yes.
And how much is that one-year trial?
$1,200, and in two payments, one when we file the county form, and then the one when we file the grant form with the state. And at that time, we'd be able to tell you exactly how much money you'd get back, but...
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you'd be able to fill in a lot of holes in our data, because if I'm looking at our old reports correctly, it looks like we were only reporting what the borough's trash hauler does, whereas your reach is far broader.
Yep.
Can you speak to that a little bit, just so they understand?
Yes, we, again, I mentioned that we do go after the commercial hauling as well. There are lots of haulers that are working in your municipality, and they're collecting recycling from businesses or apartment, apartments that are not handled by the contract hauler. You know, and that's the sort of thing, we make sure that we get as much recycling data as we can. Because your grants are based on, you know, your population is essentially fixed, but, you know, the more recycling that we can report and validate that would pass DEP muster, then that's, that would increase your grants.
Got it.
And just to put it in perspective, for Yardley Borough, I think we were getting $12,000 or something like that. So Bristol Borough is $15,000 to $18,000, so...
That they get back?
That they get back, yeah.
Through the grant program.
Now, it's, we'll be applying for the grant in September. The state doesn't really review it until the following year, and you get paid in that following year, if they're on the, you know, it may drag a little bit.
It's a painful cycle.
It is a long. So we're looking backward to try to get all the data for 2017, which we'll report in 2018, and you'll get paid in 2019, basically.
Any money coming in is good, so...
Might be the best $1,200 we ever spent.
Yeah, on the return for that, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, because we have noticed it was declining, so it's like, what do you, what is it you could do to bring that up? So yes, that would be good.
Well, the fact that we will mail to your business, if you give us a list of the businesses in the community, we'll mail a little postcard to them that says, Morrisville Borough and state law requires that you recycle commercial materials and aluminum, paper, cardboard, that sort of thing.
Okay.
And so then the following year, they generally find that the numbers go up even more.
Right, okay. Anyone else?
Any questions? I did, you know, provide a little thing that talks about our bona fides, and some of the changes that are going on within the grant program. But I think the one thing you want to have is this Newtown group, which is Bristol Borough, Lower Makefield, Newtown, Solbury, Upper Makefield, and Yardley Borough. And I think you might fit into that group, and as long as your grants would go up by participating in that group, and their grants would go up, too, then we will take the steps to put you in that group.
You can bundle them together, correct? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yep.
Do you have any clients where you don't take in more in the grants than what they paid for your costs?
No.
Or do you have, I should say, do you have any past clients, because they probably wouldn't be current anymore?
No, I haven't run into that.
That wouldn't be good for business.
I have some clients that have tried to go back on their own to do it, and they find that they've dropped maybe 20% in their grants, and then they come back, generally.
And then what is it, once the trial is over, with the fee?
Well, we'll see. I don't know what you, what we'll bring back for you. I mean, we want to make sure that it's worthwhile to you and worthwhile to us.
Are they pulled up back in?
So after the trial, does it become a percentage, or?
We could do it, we have at-risk-type contracts, and we have other contracts that are fixed fee, whichever is more comfortable for the borough.
Got it.
Okay.
So after that one year, we'll, I mean, after September, we'll know exactly where we all stand.
Where we stand with it, okay? Because you're collecting the data for it.
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions about?
You do all the work for the grant for this program?
Yes.
So it saves an house doing it, right?
Well...
Correct.
Plus, they cast a much wider net, and their expertise is off the charts compared to our internal ability.
Very good.
Yep.
Now, thank you so much for your time.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Hopefully, hear from you favorably next, at the next meeting.
Yes, hopefully council will adopt it Tuesday night.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's on there? Yes, J on B?
Actions on the night.
Yeah, okay. Do you want to go back to the administration part?
Actually, if we could talk about 9C, because the borough engineer is here waiting patiently.
All right.
What's 9C?
This is Kurt Schroeder?
That's the PennDOT application for traffic signal approval to adjust and restrict truck traffic.
Sure, yeah. And I'm glad I had a few minutes, because I had to remember where this was at, and I do have that information.
Bought you some time.
We are, we have to get back to PennDOT TE160 forms, which is what will enable the signals to get modified, and then that'll enable us to move forward with getting the signs installed, some other improvements to the signals.
Very good.
So we're right there, we're real close, hopefully, in the next four weeks, that'll be resolved, and we can move forward with that.
That's terrific, that's terrific.
Can I ask, weren't these forms given to you last year?
No.
I don't think so. I think it was in the last couple of weeks that it was... I think it was in the last couple of weeks that it was...
Yeah.
We just got contacted by PennDOT a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That they were ready.
Yeah.
Because it was Don Sanifani who reached out to me.
Someone else in my office had gotten alert to this first, and it didn't go through me, but my understanding is it's pretty recent that...
Right.
I just remember last year...
I think it started like maybe December.
Saying yes to please proceed, and it was at a meeting.
Right, yeah.
That's why I'm looking puzzled at this point, because I thought that those reports were done.
Yeah, we were at the study, yeah.
The PennDOT had not committed yet.
So they, maybe PennDOT was working on it, and then finally got the study, the information...
Yeah, I think what had happened, there was one, the one day I was in, Mr. Subie was asking about the grants, the MR writer, and with the demo stuff, so he asked me to come in to bring some paperwork into him. And at the time, I think it's Sean from your group was on there talking with him, and but I didn't know, and evidently it was incentive to your company, or your firm, I'm sorry, that you needed to get that study in order to proceed. So that's probably why, at that point, you were notified.
Yeah, I think our involvement was, we filled out the T-160 forms, which we just recently provided the borough, and that's got to go back into PennDOT, and that enables the signals to get modified.
Yeah.
Maybe that's why I'm confused, because I remember the T-160 forms.
Yeah, yeah, we just didn't know where the process was.
And they had to be completed and handed in, and I thought that that was done.
Yeah, no, I asked Mr. Subie about it, and I think he didn't know where that was supposed to go, so that's probably when he contacted Sean and said that's a process, because we were still waiting, thinking, okay, we're just going to get approval and get these signs. And there was an actual process through your firm to do that.
Right.
So I thank you for moving on that as quickly as you did, so we could get going with it.
And then there's the issue of the stop sign.
Right, so I guess that was something that, I don't know...
We have some new folks, though, Kurt, so you might need to explain the whole warrant analysis issue.
Sure. Yeah, so the one thing that's not included in that PennDOT work is, at Washington Avenue and Green Street, there's a desire to make that a four-way stop intersection. And so anytime the borough on any local road wants to install regulatory signage like a stop sign, there's a requirement to produce a stop sign warrant analysis, which is something our firm can provide. And then if there is a warrant that allows for, under the Pennsylvania code, to install the sign, then it can be adopted by resolution by council, and then the sign can be installed, and it becomes enforceable.
Okay.
So there's only a certain few criteria that, of which one, at least one of those things need to be met in order to put up a stop sign. So we're recommending budgeting around fifteen hundred dollars for that study to be completed, and that warrant analysis to be produced.
Okay.
And if there is the ability to warrant that stop sign to be installed, at this moment, we think it's probably going to be a sight distance criteria that won't be met, and that would be what warrants the ability to install it. But like I said, there's no guarantee. I mean, if we don't meet any of those warrants, then legally, we can't install the sign.
Right, right. Yeah, I know that it's been brought up several times, that it's been an issue down there. It was waiting, it's an accident waiting to happen, if you're down there for a while. I know that the residents have been asking to try and get it addressed, so this would be great if it can get installed. So I really don't think that's a bad thing to put that out, to do that. I don't know how the other council feels about it, but I think the residents need to see something being done with that.
There is a huge gap between when they turn onto Washington Street from Bridge Street, because the next stop sign isn't until Philadelphia Avenue.
Yeah, yeah, it's been a problem for a while, so it'd be nice if we could get that addressed. Is council okay with proceeding with that? And, yes?
Yes.
Everyone, yes?
Definitely, I am, yes.
Okay. Thank you for doing that.
Any other questions about the stop sign? Because I know Kurt has one more thing in his bag of trunks.
I have one just kind of related to that. Would it make sense if we had another issue we wanted to take a look at to do at the same time, to make it cheaper, or individually, it doesn't matter?
No, I mean, it could, it could make it cheaper, just because we'll have our traffic engineering group in town.
Oh, well, that's the case. I got a street too.
I have a resident that came to me. We have, Hamilton Boulevard, it's a divided street, and they said years ago, it used to have a do not enter on the one side and one-way signs that are no longer there, so they were looking to see if we could look into doing that again.
Do they have any history on whether or not it was just removed or removed for a purpose?
I'm guessing just over time, it probably got knocked down and never replaced.
Okay.
Oh, wait, no?
There's no ordinance for the one-way on that road. I was told by the police that divided roads like that, you don't need one-way on either side. If you choose to do an ordinance on it, that's fine, if it is divided, so you don't need a one-way going either way. And it was never, as long as I've been here thirty years, never seen a do not enter or a one-way sign on that street. We only have two one-ways in the district, in town, in the ordinance, so...
The resident claimed to me that he had seen one there, so... That's why, you know, the police chief may say you don't have it, the engineer will look at what the laws are to apply, whether we can do it.
Well, we can look into it. I'll say that the one-way street issue, we've been associated with a few of them in boroughs, they're a bit more involved, you know, to actually perform some form of a study for that, but we can at least kind of look at it at a real kind of, you know...
High level.
High level, and see where it's at, and whether we have any initial reaction or thoughts to it.
Okay.
And then we can report back to the manager with some preliminary information.
I have two streets.
Okay.
On Cox Avenue, and those of you that live around Cox Avenue, know that Osborne and Cox Avenue is like a Speedway. And Cox Avenue leads straight up to the high school, straight up to the school, so we constantly have kids walking to school, and Cox Avenue, there's no stop sign at Osborne and Cox, either way. So that's just a straightaway through. And I know we have people that do not do twenty-five, they do not slow down for the pedestrians, they're not slowing down for the kids. So you, you're doing, you know, a double and a triple take sometimes just to go through that street, because your stop sign is on Cox, so Osborne doesn't have one. Same thing with Barclay. Barclay, there's not a stop sign. The first stop sign is at Barnsley, the next one isn't until Harding. So right at Cox and Barclay, there's no stop sign, so you're coming, they're...
Straight through?
Straight through, yeah. So they're picking up speed, especially if they're coming from Barnsley, because it's a longer stretch than between Cox and Harding. So between Cox and Barnsley, it's a longer stretch, so they're picking up speed, and they're just zooming straight through. My concern is a pedestrian's going to get hit if one has not, in the past, been hit. But because the kids are walking to school, just to me, it's a safety issue. I don't know why, I don't know if there was ever a stop sign there before, and it was taken down, I don't know. But if there's a way without a higher cost, putting that into that study for those two streets.
We can, like I said, the stop sign warrant analysis, there's very specific criteria for when, and one, it's an absolute not warrant requirement, is to use it for a speed control. And stop signs actually are counterproductive, because people now have to stop, and to make up the lost time, they like to accelerate and go faster, which could create an even less safe condition. But, you know, that's an interesting segment of roadway, and there are traffic calming measures that could be explored, and I'm not talking about speed bumps and all, there's different, you know, maybe more popular...
Yeah, we looked into them before.
...public works, they don't like speed bumps when they're plowing snow, but there's less controversial topics of speed bumps that could be looked at. And there's actually, you talk about a route to schools, there's a lot of good grants out there specifically for making safer routes for students that walk to school.
That's, that's one of my biggest concerns, is because there's a lot of kids around there, and everybody's, you know, they're walking to school, either, you know, coming up Cox, or they're coming up Harding. And I notice a lot of them every morning, because I have kids in the school, and that's the way that they're walking. And, I mean, it's pretty sad when you have to watch kids play Frogger to get across the street.
If I could also say, Virginia, there was a gentleman came in, remember, about the beginning of the year, he had the little girl with him, and he left a note, and I saw twice, he came to the meeting, and their meetings were so busy, that he didn't get a chance to speak, because the little girl was wanting to go home. So the poor thing, if I see him again, if he was here tonight, I would have brought him up first and said, please, you can go put her to bed. Did he leave a note where that problem was, on the street?
I believe so, I think he left it.
You gave it to, okay?
I know where it is, it's exactly at Cox and...
Oh, okay, where she's talking?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, so I wanted to address that, because he was here several times to try and talk about it, so thank you.
It's dangerous right there. It is, I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. It's dangerous, and watching the kids try and cross the street almost, I know it's not right, but wants me to stop in the middle of the street so these kids can cross. You know, just get out of my car and get them to, you know, cross the street, because everybody's in a rush, but, you know, it's their safety. I don't want someone to be distracted, and, you know, hit any kids.
We can look at the corridor, and, you know, I think relating into the next discussion, and...
My favorite topic.
There still.
Okay.
I don't know if that can be included in the Green Street and Washington Street.
We can take a look at it. I'll have our traffic engineers swing over there when they're in town, and just do a quick drive-through and, you know, scope things out, but it's grant season now.
Right.
That's why Scott's so excited, because grants are a great thing.
My favorite time of the year.
Money.
And, you know, we, you know, we've been working on grants in the past, and we've had some good success in getting some things kick-started, so we want to keep building off that momentum. And we brainstormed a few weeks ago, we knew that the grants were going to get launched here, and they have, so we want to try and get the conversation started on what we want to apply for. And the one that's really pressing at the moment is the CDBG grant, which is Community Development Block Grant. It goes from the feds to the county, and all the participating communities, including Morrisville, can apply for that pool of money and then hopefully get funding. We got funding last year for half a playground in Williamson Park, which is cool, you know, we're grateful that they gave us, I think it was a hundred ninety-one thousand dollars.
Right.
So the obvious application that comes to mind is to try to apply for the other half this year. And I know that we applied for a second grant last year to CDBG, which was for MR writer. And we did a very aggressive application for that, to try and do like a three-year phased application. We kind of had gotten some advice from the county to consider doing that. Unfortunately, we weren't successful with that, but we did obviously got, you know, the funding for the demolition of the school, and that was actually what year one's funding was appropriate, what we'd requested for. So for this year's application, we, we want to try to hit the target a little bit more accurately with the CDBG funding. It's a real narrow window of what that funding's eligible for, and we came up with a concept that maybe, as we're trying to now convert the MR writer property into a passive recreation park, and one of the real attractive grant ideas for CDBG is around accessibility and ADA. Perhaps we can look at, you know, the perimeter of the property, some parking facilities, you know, access to the summer seat building, like some kind of ADA-driven grant to CDBG. So is that something that sounds...
I know when the commissioners came out for a meeting there, when this whole process was going on, and they were talking about what the park could have in it, you know, because you're regulated when it's open space, one of them was some type of a small, even ADA bathroom. Didn't have to be big, but if you're going to have, let's say you had reenactment there or something going on, you'd have to have some kind of a facility, so that, they did say that was one of the allowable things, because you can't put structures up, everything has to be approved through them. The other one was the parking lot, because it's surrounded by homes, you want to be respectful of everyone there and their parking, so they do allow you to change the parking, reconfigure it, add where you would need to, so that was also something in there.
So we think that that would be a good application for CDBG, and like I said, we're kind of trying to fit the project to the grant program, but as far as the entire future recreation, passive recreation park goes there, there's other grants that we want to recommend being applied for this year, and there's a lot, and they come out this time of year, and they come out throughout the year, but a bulk of them just came out. The CDBG one, they always give us, they give us three weeks.
Yeah.
You only have time to get a resolution, you know, from council. We're fortunate that Friday it came out, and here we are already before you, so that's actually great timing for us. But, you know, there's, there's other grant programs that just came out with DCED. There's a Greenway Trails and Recreation Program, and that's a pretty good program for kind of coming up with a game plan for the MR writer property, like developing a concept sketch, maybe even taking it through engineering, getting something that's got permits and ready to go. Maybe we do that this year and set the table for next year, we go after the construction money. So that's definitely one that we're recommending we apply for as well, and that's, that program's open right now.
Kurt and I discussed this all at length, and we share the philosophy, full throttle, pedal to the metal on all grants. And we want to make sure we have the support of council to do so.
Go get them.
I think Marshall needs to rock and roll.
Well, I mean, if you, if you have a moment, I mean, maybe it would be useful for me to just kind of run through the list we have now, please. We want to take another shot, we got the flood hazard mitigation money from DCED last year for the levy study, it was a hundred and forty thousand dollars. We were hoping that we could find a match to that with some federal money, but unfortunately, that bucket doesn't have any money in it right now. So to keep that process going, we don't know how far we'll be able to get with the levy, with the funding we already received. We want to take another shot at more money under that same program next year, and that could be the next phase. We do a study now, maybe we have to do engineering for what the construction actually would need to gain accreditation there. So we would craft an application in that regard for the same funding we got last year.
Is there a timeframe to use that hundred forty thousand, you know, they've got those windows for it to apply it?
There is. Every grant, there's so many different grants, and everyone has unique, you know, periods, but I want to say that the grant agreement for that takes us out to like 2020.
Okay.
There's a couple of years there, but we don't want, we want to get moving.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was hoping it was like a year or something like that, because CDBG is a year.
But, you know, you blank, and it's a year.
Exactly.
So we want to keep that one moving, but there's a couple of years on that, on that grant. Now, I had some good conversations today with regard to that, and we got notice that they're going to do another inspection.
July.
Army Corps turn, I think, this year. So we got a lot of buzz going with Army Corps and DEP, and we got the canal folks involved, so we really have a lot of momentum at our backs right now with this levy. So I think we'll, you know, we get the grant, and everyone already knows about it, you know, all these other entities, everyone, everyone's talking about this, which is great.
The focus for flooding is right here, so this is the time to jump on it for us, for the levy.
Definitely. And the levy, as we've talked over the years, is kind of the prerequisite for making improvements to Williamson Park in its entirety. You know, it's kind of like, let's kind of, let's get the levy in good health, so then we can start kind of dressing up Williamson Park. And there's, there's a really great DCNR grant, C2P2 grant that's out now, and we want to, you know, as Scott said, take shots at every net we can find, and maybe we'll ask for the playground money from that as well, and if it's not the playground, maybe it's the next improvement to the park. There's a lot of discussion, do we just kind of upgrade the park as it is, or is there changes to the park, reconfigurations to the park that we want to explore? Maybe there's a master plan to what the new park would look like after, you know, we do get millions of dollars to redevelop it. So we need a little direction on that.
Okay.
But, but I think we can at least craft an application to try to get some money in, and then we can focus on what we're going to do with it.
Okay.
And keep in mind, just because a grant doesn't get funded, doesn't mean that that exercise was a waste of time, because the next window that opens, we will recycle that application.
Absolutely.
Over and over and over again.
And some of that's already happening. I mean, we already have things teed up for the MR writer and the playground at the park, so those applications... So, those applications will be inexpensive this year because the cost was substantially paid last year for it. And these grants, all these grants, it's really tricky because you can get a million dollars, but if you need a 50% match to that, you have to come up with another million dollars. So, getting a million dollars isn't necessarily great if you don't have corresponding match. So, we obviously look at these things in their entirety and we try to plan and program for how they're all going to fit together. So, we're not coming to one day and saying, hey, if you don't have a million dollars next year, we have to give this money back because the grant people hate that too.
Right.
You start getting grant money, you got to deliver.
Right.
And spend that money quickly or else they won't give you more grant money.
You got to follow through.
We need ribbon cuttings.
They need, that's right. They like ground breakings and ribbon cutting, so. And we have some other sources we want to tap into. I know the county's very interested in helping with, you know, they've been helpful, but they want to continue to be helpful with some of these other efforts. And they do have some programs that could be useful. So, we're working with the county to bring them up to speed. And there's a new planning commission executive director who we've met with and talked with.
And he's spent a lot of time here the past few weeks.
Yeah. I mean, you know, Marshall's really poison-ready and a lot of people are going to eye on us.
A lot of eyes on us, yeah.
Yeah. So, there's a C2P2 grant application for Williamson Park. There's the Greenway Trails. We also think we should apply for Williamson Park as well, even though we said, apply for MR Rider, let's apply for both.
Right, exactly.
Like Scott said, a lot of the information's recycled and, you know, you're spending over here, you can put in two. And, you know, if you get, if you hit on one, great.
Right.
Probably unlikely we'll hit on both, but rather have.
Never know.
Pick from two instead of from one and not get that one.
Right.
So, CDBG, we talked about that. Later in the year, there's some grants coming out that we want to keep in mind. We've applied for in the past and we want to continue applying for replacing all the street signs in town.
Okay.
The federal government's been pushing back a requirement to bring all signs into compliance with this thing called retroreflativity when your headlights hit the sign.
John knows about that.
You want it to shine back.
Poor John.
Yeah. So, there's money out there. We've applied in years past and have been unsuccessful, but you keep shooting at the same. Eventually, that project might climb up and be worthy. Greenlight goes, another application for signage that we want to consider. And then I think there's consideration for Borough Hall renovations.
Wow.
And there's actually a pretty nice state grant program that it could be a long shot, but you just don't know. We should make an application to RACP for that.
And don't forget, we have a library that's a historic building that always needs work and a playground that we haven't even talked about yet. So, our to-do list is long.
And, you know, just in talking with that area by Cox, there's another grant in this pool of grants called Multimodal Transportation Fund. And they want to improve pedestrian accessibility. They want to improve vehicular and pedestrian conflicts. So, if you're talking about streetscaping, I know we're always talking about Bridge Street and trying to do something there. I'm a little skeptical of that. It's worthy of taking a shot, but I just feel like there's things that need to happen prior to that application. It's just my personal opinion. It could be swayed, but the idea of like doing a streetscape along Cox to calm traffic and make it more pedestrian-friendly, that would, there's a good grant program for that as well.
Okay.
So, we can kind of look at that segment with the mind of, can we do an application for it?
Mm-hmm.
So, that's where we're at. That's what we've been working on the last month or two. And really, the CDBG ones are the ones that we need, the endorsement to get those two applications in in the next three, two and a half weeks at this point.
So, you need a resolution from council?
Yeah. They don't give you much time, so sometimes you can't even get to a council meeting in that amount of time. So, we'll just get authorized by a manager to make the application and you can submit the resolution. After the fact, they'll accept it.
Okay.
But if we can get a resolution next, this week to you and you can have it.
Tuesday.
By next week's meeting to authorize, then we'll have it in hand.
That'd be great.
We'll get those drafts out.
That would be great.
Thanks, Kurt.
I know we lucked out. I'll just give a quick update, just so people know. They will ask it from time to time about MR Rider and just updates on it. Some people weren't aware that we actually did make settlement in December. And I think right after Christmas we did that, right? Or right before.
November.
Right before. Okay, right before. And so, yes, we did make settlement on that. We had all our funding to have that happen. We worked on that. We were very lucky that we, I mean, it took a while and a lot of maneuvering to get two grants for that demo. The demo was not easy to use a grant for. You got a big bar on steel practically to make sure that it gets over the finish line. So, out of that $270,000 demo cost for the borough, it was like $18,000 of the difference. So, that was a heck of a pot that we pulled in. So, Marshville did good. Everybody did good working on that. So, it shows you what you could do. So, I think going after money for MR Rider is going to be a good one also. They want to see something done.
Definitely.
So, that's great. Thanks.
Debbie, I just had two quick things I wanted to say. While you're looking at all these grants, a couple of things that stick out in the back of my mind to keep in the back of yours, when you said ADA compliance, one thing I noticed is our Williamson Park, even the crosswalks from, you know, across Delmore Avenue to the park go to nowhere. So, maybe if there's grants available just to build an ADA compliant, just to start there so that you have the sidewalk or landing to access the park. Right now, you know, crosswalk goes right in the grass. Also, we have a dog park that's built on the top of the hill. People have to walk up and down the hill when it's rainy, muddy. It'd be another thing to just keep in the back of our mind if we see any grants, it might be applicable to build a entrance way into it.
Those are both dead ringers for the CDBG. So, maybe with the playground, what we can do and what we like to do with grants is we'll submit, you know, similar theme for the grant, like one grant application, but we'll kind of have a couple different things in it and separate cost estimates. So, if they can't, let's say we ask for a half a million. If they only want to give us a quarter million, they can say, oh, well, we can give out option A and B. We'll skip C and you at least get two, you know, two of the three items that you applied for.
Since you're already applying.
So, with the playground, we should include, you know, developing accessible routes, you know, in and out of the parks.
Yeah.
At least for Williamson Park. I don't know if we want to tie the dog park into this application. It might muddy it up a little bit, bud.
We have many projects.
They're good ideas that we should definitely, yeah, there are. We're looking at all the grants, like, yeah, there's one there, one.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we definitely should have, hopefully we'll have good success with these applications.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kurt.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, the mayor's not here. Solicitor, do you have anything for us?
We have interviews. Okay, hi. We have interviews set up for three candidates that council has selected for this Monday night. Council's going to be working really hard even on President's Day, starting at seven o'clock in Borough Hall. And then it'll then be council's pleasure, if they choose one of those candidates, they'll have that option at the next council meeting, which will be the next night on Tuesday.
Correct.
There's also, do you want me to discuss? Scott, you want to discuss the opioid thing or not?
Sure. Maybe I'll give you a heads up about it.
Yeah, let me give you a heads up. You know, for years, you couldn't go after Big Tobacco because no one ever beat Big Tobacco. And the reason I mention this personally is I was offered the opportunity to come up with a significant amount of money to go after them. And I said, I think it was like 50 grand, I said, I'm not going to spend that. It's money down the drain. No one ever beats Big Tobacco. And of course, one of my friends who did it, he retired from the practice of law. So, I guess he chose wisely. But then I wouldn't have got to meet you. So, see, I'm the lucky one. I'm the lucky one here for making a foolish business decision. However, however, if you saw the news, I think it was yesterday or the day before, I lose track of the days, but I think it was yesterday or the day before, one of the major manufacturer of the major opiate that is the problem will not, will no longer spend, they cut their staff in half, they're not going to be advertising to doctors. What's that?
I'm sorry.
They're not going to be advertising with the doctors. They're not going to have all these, you know, fun little dinners and all that, all that other stuff. And so, what do you want to say? I'm sorry. Did I say something?
No, no. Thank you, huh?
Okay. So, what was interesting to me when I saw that, that's a sign of blood in the water to me. And we've been working, Bristol Township is now looking into it. We're going to be at our next meeting, but there's a group of, there's a couple of women in Philadelphia who are phenomenal trial lawyers and were involved with a lot of these class action suits. In case council doesn't know it, Philadelphia is basically the hub of class action in the United States. And there's a number of factors for that, but it's not really relevant, other than to say that there are a number of the firms there. The city of Philadelphia is involved, the county's involved, everyone's involved, Ben Salem's involved, Bristol Township hopefully will be involved shortly. And I was able to negotiate with these women a much lower rate. Philly, I think Philly's paying a third or 40%. I forget what it is.
Camera's still on the dais.
And instead, this will be 25% at the most. It doesn't cost the borough one dime. And this will be, we'll be able to recover for the money that we spend for our emergency personnel, police and fire, you know, for everything, for this scourge of this epidemic, which if you know, if you know what's gone on, and I think we've all read so much at this point, this was, a lot of this was brought about by the greed of the drug companies. And they told the doctors that they had these wonderful drugs and they were not addictive, were not very addictive. And no one would get addicted to it. And we ended up with everybody on heroin because that was cheaper and more readily available. And now, part of the problem is then you have recovery homes, you have this whole cascading events, higher police costs, higher incarceration rates, on and on and on and on and on, not to mention our young people are showing up dead or seriously injured in the streets and in the hospitals. So, I would, I will, with your permission, I will continue talking to them and I would suggest that Morrisville Borough also get on the bandwagon. It costs nothing and I suspect, I think the case is much stronger and I think it'll be like all these other class actions. And I guarantee you, the reason this big drug company has reduced everything is because they see the handwriting on the wall. And, you know, the only way to get to them is through their, is through their pocketbook. We've seen tobacco use plummet in this country because they don't advertise it. You don't see sexy men and women out there, you know, smoking cigarettes. It's not glamorized anymore and we need to do so. And I think, as a council, I think it's good for you because you're taking, you're being proactive and you're going after the root cause of this problem, which is we have drug companies who are acting as, in some cases, drug pushers, whether it was overtly doing it or just out of greed or just out of ignorance. But everything I've read indicates to me that they knew how bad these drugs were and they lied and misled the physicians who then became their pushers, in a sense, to our children and our brothers and sisters and spouses and colleagues. And so, I wanted to broach that subject with you.
Quick question. Is this the, did this originate in Ben Salem locally? I think I remember hearing something about.
They may have been the first, but they're, all the, but the cities are, I mean, Philadelphia's involved, the county, I think Bucks is involved, everyone's involved. And if we don't do it, we, I mean, we have, every municipality has huge costs related to this, huge costs. And I mean, you know, and personal costs. And the only way we're going to get this under control is to really hit the drug companies. The one thing they only, the only thing they understand is billions of dollars in damages, just like the billions in profits that they've been making all these years. And that will, just like it did with the tobacco companies, it will have a drastic effect the way they market this. And the truth is, you're not looking for money, although we want it, we'd like to be reimbursed. What you're looking for is to put an end to this epidemic.
Understood.
And this is what I think will help. So, my strong suggestion, oh, I can have these, I can have these people appear in front of you. I can, you can meet an executive session because it's involving litigation. You know, you don't have to publicly do this. You have to vote publicly to hire a firm, but what have you. So, that's for council to consider.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. I think I'm going to stop speaking. Thank you. If I could turn on my.
Okay. The other things we have is reports for next week. I don't know if anybody wants to wait on anything tonight would be any committee reports or you can wait till next week. That's one of the things we'll work on. Okay. Sure. Okay, all right. Thank you, Ted. Okay, the action items, the other one was the authorization to hire the part-time police officer. At the last meeting, it actually got voted down. After speaking with the chief of police and going over some of the things, which one of the things that I didn't realize either is there's eight positions for part-time. And with some of them leaving and some of them coming back in, he was not the eight that he is allotted in our fee schedule. So, I said to him, well, then he could put it back up for the reconsideration if he wants to bring that back to the council. He did get the approval from the council to hire the full-time officer that brings him then up to the amount that he had at the full-time officers. And the civil services is working on that process right now. So, that was put on there for that reason. If someone has any comment about it, you want to speak about it?
I still have questions, but I'll wait until next week when I can.
Okay. So, I just want to bring up why that was placed back on. Okay, we did that one. The pen that we did, the 9D would be authorization to permit a Marshall Yardley Area Rotary Club to utilize Williamson Park on March 31st, 2018, from 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. for its annual Easter egg hunt. So, I think everybody knows that they do that every year. The other one is 9E will be authorization for the borough engineer and borough solicitor proceed with the installation of that new stop sign, which you knew about. 9F is an acceptance of resignation letter from Councilman Bill Pepitone, who is a representative for the Second Ward. So, we didn't receive his letter. I would just would say with a heavy heart, he's a good person and I know he did his best and he's sad that he's going to have to leave, but that's on the agenda. So, anyone, it would be only from the Second Ward that wants to put in a letter of interest is able to do that for that ward.
Just to point out, they have to be in that residence for a year.
Yes, yes. I'm sorry. Yes, they do. Yeah, and from that particular ward. It will take effect as to the, what Mr. Pepitone has in his memo, which will be read at the meeting. Next one is 9G, which would be the motion to hire a permanent borough manager and to appoint same as borough secretary, subject to the negotiation of an employment agreement. I had asked the solicitor, is that wording okay? Does anything need to be changed? It's good.
It's okay.
It's okay. If you want to adjust it, I mean.
It's okay. I'm okay.
Just okay, Randy.
It's brilliant.
See, we're not, see, we're not, we're not a good at this, you, so we're going to defer that to you and you can.
I was reading Shakespeare. My God.
We thought we put something in there, but you can, you can adjust that, but that's.
Randy, somebody watching this on TV sent me an email saying you and I are like the Abbott and Costello of Morrisville's council meetings.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy.
I'm flattered.
So, of course, we will be having that executive meeting on Monday to do those interviews with candidates that were selected and then, of course, we will bring it to the council just that everyone knows what we were doing at all times. Next up would be unfinished business would be appointments that are coming up. would be appointments that are coming up. There's one for the Environmental Advisory Council. It's a three-year appointment. It did expire in December 19th. I mean, I'm sorry, will expire on December 19th, 2020. And it did expire, yeah, but it will expire as the appointment will come up. The person that has her term expired is Nicole Rahm, who's been with the, quite a few years with the MEAC and did send a letter in to ask to be reappointed. I think that was the only one. I wrote the notes down from that board.
Yes.
The Planning Commission, there's two four-year appointments. Debbie Colgan from the ME, I'm sorry, the MEAC, her term expired also in December. Gary Amos, his expired in December. They're sending letters in, asking for reappointment. I think there was.
Three applicants.
Three applicants. Let me see if I got them. John DeWilde, Holly Harmon. What was the third one? I don't have the third one. Do you know?
You've got Gary Amos.
And Debbie Colgan.
Debbie Colgan.
Debbie Colgan.
They're the ones expired.
Holly Harmon. And we also have, well, the next one is a zoning hearing board, but both from the, that applied for the zoning hearing board also mentioned planning.
Okay.
So either of those could conceivably be Planning Commission applicants as well.
So there's five for the Planning Commission?
Um, yes.
There's three firm and two possibilities.
Yeah. And I believe everyone got all of these.
Yes.
Applications. Some are from previous, so we were holding on to them, but they're there. You can reach out and speak to them. Some people already know some of these applicants. Debbie Colgan and Gary Amos, of course, have been on there for a while, so everyone knows them, but you can reach out and speak to them also. The next one would be.
Before you move on, Madam President?
Yes.
And just to remind you, though, the, that one of them, there has to be one person on that board from the MEAC. And I believe Debbie Colgan is that person from the MEAC.
Yes, yes.
For their bylaws.
Yes, that would be the bylaws for that. Thank you for reminding me about that. That's true, yes.
I believe it says it's only recommended. It's not actually necessary.
Oh, is it? Oh, okay. Oh, look at that. But she did, she's been on there for quite a few years. She did ask to be reappointed. The other one would be for the zoning board. It's a three-year appointment. And it's Suzanne Zokowski. Her term expires this month, to 17, 18. I don't recall getting, did we get anything from her? I didn't see anything unless I missed it. Okay, all right. So she wants to be considered. Okay. I think the other one, you said there's someone else?
There are two other candidates for zoning hearing board, or they could conceivably also be for Planning Commission.
Okay. And the zoning was, I think he asked the last time. This is the alternate position, right?
John DeWilde.
Okay.
And.
Eric McQ.
Eric McQ.
I think I just, yeah, I think I just got that one. Okay. Okay, so that everybody knows who all the candidates are. Anybody have any questions on that, or if they have any suggestions on it? Okay. Okay. There's nothing, a new business that I see, borough official comments, the adjournment. Is there anything else that we missed that anyone would like to address or bring up?
Well, we do have a non-agenda item I'd like to bring up, once you guys have had a chance to.
Is there anything?
Anything else.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have one question, one quick question for Scott, because I told you I only had a few and I lied to you. So the Crown Street property, is there any update? Has there been anything applied for through that property at this point?
Zero new information, other than the chief representative from the presentation they gave council that evening will be meeting with the zoning officer later this month.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else needs to add anything to the agenda or ask about the agenda?
Is there something else?
Okay, we've got everything so far. Okay, then I'll give the floor to Scott Mitchell, our manager, and he'll bring up his item.
Well, again, this was in your packets, and I don't think this is a new discussion point, but Morrisville Little League is looking for an answer so that they can do what they need to do for their upcoming 2018 season. They had presented council with a proposal back in the fall. The representative that I met with said they never got a firm response from the borough. They asked me if I would recirculate it. I did. They asked me if I would bring it up to you, to your meeting tonight. I am. I think at the very least, we should give them some sort of answer.
So if I may, is it the same, it's the same information that was provided before, correct?
The same information that was provided.
And there was a consensus on council at that point to not move forward with, with their land, I'll call it. Is that correct? We're on here?
Mm-hmm.
It's.
That I know of.
Has, has that changed?
Well, last I remember, we were, the athletic committee was going to meet with them. I guess that didn't happen.
They, they did.
They did.
They did. That's what this memo was from.
I didn't get any kind of report from that. When did that happen?
Yeah, Mr. Subey put it in everybody's packet. We all got it.
No, no, the athletic committee was supposed to meet with them after that, after that October meeting.
They refused to meet with the athletic committee. They reached out many, many times, and MML did not meet with them after they came to the meeting and took back the $7,000 check that they were supposed to work with the agreement. They were trying to get, Mr. Subey was trying to work out with them. And, and that's where this memo came from, that meeting, where they said they didn't want to pay. They wanted things to stay as is. And, and that was their stance with the borough.
And from my recollection, as somebody in the crowd at that time, I clearly remember, and I believe it was Mr. Parker firmly said to Mr. Subey to take care of it. And it doesn't look like that's the case. I don't think, I mean, unless there's a consensus change, I think the borough manager should be handling this and be given full authority to do so.
Yeah. And to, to Mr. Parker's credit, I will say, he did actually say to Mr. Subey, it was, you know, he was given a directive three times and, and didn't proceed. So here we are with this. That's the idea, that if the council's given an instruction to a manager and they're not carrying it out.
Well, just for clarification, could I ask what that instruction was? Because we have policy in place on utilization of borough property, including its, its fields. I cannot deviate from that policy unless council agrees to grant relief to this organization, which is what they're asking for. When I met with them just last week in this room, they asked for all fees or financial obligations for 2016 and 2017 seasons to be waived. And they wanted to negotiate a price less than our past fee schedule would have dictated for the 2018 season. They're, they've claimed that their participation level has declined. They anticipate having about 300 participants this season. And about 10% of those are hardship cases that do not pay. So, you know, we got to make a decision. They acknowledge the fact that most of their participants are from outside the borough. So that's not a point of contention on their part. The question is whether their financial capabilities are at this time. And they shared some financial data with me. So I guess we just need to know how you want us to respond.
I can only speak for me, but there's been a set of rules set in front of them. Even with the money taken out of the equation, they have not followed those rules. There's been paperwork requested over and over and over for the last four years, to my recollection. And until there are those rules and requirements being met, I don't, I don't see why we would have the same conversation that's already been had.
Well, just so you're aware, I had a very blunt conversation with the league organizer and said, you know, this doesn't look good for you. What are your contingency plans if we can't reach an agreement? And, you know, I talked about Lower Makefield, I talked about Falls Township. They basically don't have a contingency plan. So they're, depending on what council's direction is, there may not be a Morrisville Little League season 2018, unless they're able to somehow merge with a, another similar focused organization. I don't know.
They, with this letter here that we have from October, they have two things in there that I'm not in agreement with. One would be reworking the T-ball fields on the side of Delmore Avenue. When they first wanted to put those in, they had to come before the Recreation Advisory Board. And it was agreed upon that they would be multipurpose fields, and there would be no permanent structures in there. There is permanent structures there, and, as well as CYO used to have soccer there. They were told they could not have soccer there any longer because they would ruin their grass. We also asked them about the carnival, because that's where the carnival always set up. And they said it would not be a problem. Carnival is now being set up on the hill. And now they want to build a mini Fenway park. We can't get grants now because they utilized the majority of our park. So I don't think we should make any kind of agreement right now with them.
And I do know that one of the issues, and it's also in the last memo that was done in the minutes for last year, when Mr. Pepitone and the athletic group and the manager met with them, one of the things, even aside from the money issue, because if their enrollment is down, then it actually benefits them to do that headcount, because that's what they're paying for. But the land use has been a really big problem, because they will expand out and have been expanding out in areas that they weren't supposed to be in. And that's, that's a big issue for us as far as doing improvements on the park. And like I said, as our engineers said, we, in the last few years, have been working very hard and going to have them draw up grants. It, I could see if we were able to do some kind of a mutual thing, but it's, it's, it's not going that way. And for four, it's almost four years now, this has been back and forth. And I was kind of surprised myself when the last memo came in, I think some other people were, that their stance was the same, and they want to tell you, if they give you a little bit, what you're going to spend it on. And basically not pull back into those areas, they wanted more. We don't have any more. We don't have any more. We're, we're being told, you're not going to approve that park if, if you don't put the brakes on some of this. A shared thing is like, and I know we said, we didn't want them there, but they can't have eight, nine, 10, continue on fields. They can't, you know, be running tournaments and the borough, it's not going through the borough. That's what happened for a while. Even some of their upper league members have said they didn't know they weren't paying the borough. And, and that's part of that information that came back from that meeting last year, where they gave us a check long enough to get the vote for their parade, and then came to the meeting and said, we took that back. We canceled it. We're not giving you anything. And, and they went on with their, their league that year. So then to present this, I think council was just up to here. By the time this came in, October, December, we were in the middle of our budget meetings, what was going on. I remember getting it. I remember it being actually addressed as to breaking it down or meeting anymore. It's like, we've met and met and met, and they know the requirements that is expected of them. We have ordinances and, and policies in that are put in by the borough for a reason, is to protect everybody, not just them. So that's, like I said, as far as I knew, it was like, if they didn't comply and have the agreement, that, and I think that Mr. Subey actually drew up something pretty much, it might have been through the attorney, that, that was based off what our policies are and our ordinance. And it never got any further than that. Because, like I said, Mr. Pepitone reached out several times, and they were into their season, and next thing you know, we don't have any more money, and we're not dealing with you. And then we said, well, they'll be back. Here we go. And here we go again. So it's a shame. I feel bad for them, and I feel bad for the borough, because it's a, it's catch 22 with this. You know, we, we want to develop the park for everyone, everyone. And that would include them too, but not the way they're handling this, not at all. We can't hand over the park. That's the bottom line. Your legislators and your, and your task to make sure that the land's protected, the money's spent properly, and, and agreements like this don't get stepped on. What's an ordinance if you're going to put more in and nobody follows them? Everybody has to. That's just my, my stance on it. I'm sorry. If anybody else has anything to say about it.
Debbie, I'll just say, my stance as a new in council is, I think we should go back to having them sign the agreement, whatever their last written agreement is for the amount of land they have, and let the money not be a factor. If we need, my, my opinion is, if we need to delay them paying for this year, it doesn't make us or break us. We haven't been paid in years, ever been paid. If we have to push it off a little longer, I don't have a problem with it. But I'd like to see us get something written in paper for their use of land before their season starts.
I think we should, we need to continue to negotiate with them. I think, I think the borough manager needs to meet with them again. And, you know, they, they have a declining enrollment, then, you know, registration, then they need to start to relinquish some of, of what they're using. They don't need all of that if their, if their numbers are declining. But to not, at least offer them the option of doing it this year, you know, all those people who signed up for it, all those parents and who come into town are going to have, you know, a negative view of Morrisville if we just abruptly, you know, beginning of the season is only, you know, only a short period away. And to just pull it out from under them this, this late in, in the game is.
Should.
Effect us negatively as far as, you know.
It's going to affect them negatively too. It's on both sides.
There's, there's a no win to this. There's, there's no winning, winning, winning team on this one. However, what I will say is, four years ago, this was already voted on. And the rules were put in place, and we're expecting folks that are teaching good sportsmanship to children to follow rules. That's all we're asking for. I don't think that that's too much to ask for. I think to sit down and say, you were provided rules. What you do is teach good sportsmanship to children. We're looking for you to display that yourselves, I don't think is asking too much.
It's also a new board. They had a new board elected at the end of last year. I think we need to give that board and not, not look back at four years, and a board that, that took that stance and hold it against them, and at least give them the opportunity to. Otherwise, you're effectively killing Little League that has a history here in the borough that goes back generations.
Is there any residents from the borough on the board?
No.
Not that I know of, no.
No.
So do they have a vested interest in the borough?
They have a vested interest in.
In the fields.
Continuing the tradition of Morrisville.
The fields. Because they can't play somewhere else.
It's also the tradition of the Little League.
When they made the agreement with the borough, when they put the two fields in, the multipurpose fields along Delmore Avenue, they also relinquished the use of the two fields in front of the stage. They said they would no longer need them, and they gave them back to the borough. They've been using them ever since.
And like I said, it's a new board. They seem to be a more reasonable board than the prior board. I mean.
Well, when did they start? When did they appoint a new board?
The end of last year.
Well, more reasonable was the last letter they sent us, when they want to put a Fenway field in.
Yeah, a mini Fenway field.
Except for an actual design. I mean, again, they need the fields. They can negotiate.
We don't have them.
Well, my, my, my thing is, you said the money end of it at this point is going to be whatever they finally show for the registrations, and that's going to be that breakdown. The land is a problem. They, they have to take those T-balls and find another area for them. They cannot keep all those parks. They, they've taken that multipurpose and they've made, they put fields there. I showed an aerial shot from 2010 to 2016, and in that six year, you can see where there was nothing in that multipurpose area, and there is now. And that wasn't approved. So I get what they're doing, but they've also caused this problem with their league. It's not all the borough. That's why this is, this is tough, because we, we weren't on then either. But they, they, we can't just hand it over. It is going to impede doing something with the grants that you're going to get.
We're just talking allowing them to start their season. I mean, if you don't do anything and you don't direct the borough manager to allow them to use it, then effectively that their season is over and.
Well, they have, they would have four or five other fields. The only areas that we were asking for them at this point was in the stage area where they were, weren't supposed to be there. That was given back. We have, we have information from the league from back then. And, and the multipurpose area that was supposed to stay open. The backstop shouldn't be there. It shouldn't be developed fields. And, I mean, if you think about it, with all this going back. And, I mean, if you think about it, with all this going back and forth, we could have put the brakes on this four years ago, and we didn't. And we're still dealing with this. So you're still getting, right down the center of that main park, they would still have these huge fields. I mean, I don't think that's asking much. We've got postage-stamped amount of land for everybody else. It doesn't even look like a park, it looks like a baseball complex. It's starting to look like Williamsport. And that's not what that's meant to be.
I agree with you, but I think we should allow our borough manager to continue to talk to them and present what we want to do. I mean, if we want to begin to take back, you know, fields and convert them back to borough use, then we need to have him tell them that.
He did.
Let me ask a question, maybe I can divide the equation into two parts. Is council willing to consider forgiving the amounts to, for the 2016-2017 season?
How much does that total out to?
Depending on who you talk to, it would be around $10,000 a year.
Oh, so we forgave that, but we did for 15?
Well, the amount for 15 was for years prior to that.
Okay.
So 16 and 17 theoretically would have been $10,000 a year, that's $20,000. Is there wiggle room in that number? Are you willing to forgive that altogether? Is there requesting? Why don't we start with the past, and then let's talk about 2018?
Just take their $5,000 that they're offering?
Need some of the previous, the previous two years.
Were you willing to consider a counterproposal for a lesser amount for the two prior years? You're already out the money. So at this point, if we get anything.
Do they want to pay now? How are they going to pay that?
Well, they shared their financial statements with me. They do have some money in the bank, but it's certainly not a windfall for anybody.
Well, they just started sign-ups too.
Right.
Correct, they just started sign-ups for the 2018 season, even though there's a lot of uncertainty about whether there will be a 2018 season. So in terms of the two prior years, do we want to hold firm? Or is there some wiggle room there?
I wouldn't mind, you know, working with them with that. But I just want them to, I want them to abide by the agreement that was set years ago. Multipurpose fields and giving back the two fields in front of the stage.
Can I make a suggestion? Or perhaps put something out there? They owe $20,000 for the last two years. You know, we're just talking about the past. What if not going after the full, don't, everybody jumped on my thread at this point, $20,000, saying $5,000 for 2016, $5,000 for 2017? You give back those two T-ball fields, the multipurpose field is put back, and this is what you get. Going in, I'm not finished.
Sorry, I thought you were done.
No. Going in, this is just an idea. Going into 2018, they're, because their registration has declined, go after, tell them that, you know, they need to look at doing the per-head of residence 15, like it says in our.
Fee schedule.
In our fee schedule, and non-resident 30. And looking at it that way. Just an idea.
Well, isn't that basically the manager enforcing what's on our books already? Basically, that's exactly what's there.
Right. I mean, and they have to, they have to have that once their rosters close, because there's rosters close by, if I'm not mistaken, the end of this month. Last day to sign up is the end of this month.
Are they going to present their roster? They've never done it in the past.
They have to present their roster to the borough by March, whatever date we decide to choose, that roster has to be presented to us. They sit down with the borough manager, this is how many we have that are in the borough, this is how many we have outside of the borough, this is your fee, this is what you have to produce to us.
So you're recommending that we allow them to start the season? Is that correct?
Not until they produce everything that is required.
Including the payment of the prior two years?
That's just my opinion.
My only concern with that is it continues a cycle of not abiding by the rules. And that's my only concern, is we're.
But the rules have to be abided by before they go into the 28 season.
I get that, but they're not abiding by the rules that have been set out in front of them, and that's all we're asking them to do, honestly.
And I agree with you there. I do agree with you there that they did not abide by the rules, and they were allowed to go.
What's your stance? If they don't do it this year, because last year they came here.
They don't do it this year, they don't start. That's it.
Okay, so you're going to go down there, padlock, take the keys off them? Because we've done this before, and they go, "Stop me."
I know, we've been doing, since I've been on council two years now, we've been going round and round and round.
As a matter of fact, we need keys for the building.
And this is it. This is your last shot. I mean, again, that's just my opinion.
I don't know if anyone else has had a chance to talk to the residents about this, but this is not something that's necessarily supported by the majority of our residents, basically forcing Little League out of our park, so.
Who's forcing them out of the park?
Who's forcing them out?
They weren't going to have a 2018 season.
If they don't comply. Do you want them never to comply?
Well, that's, I mean, that's what you're effectively saying, that you're going to shut them down if they don't do X, Y, Z.
When you go for a loan, you have to produce paperwork. You have to have that paperwork in order to get that loan.
I understand what you're saying, but again, this is not something that's supported by the majority of the residents that I've spoken to about this particular issue. So this council has to be comfortable with effectively shutting down an organization that's been here for, again, decades, 60, 70 years.
So four years ago, when this was voted on, and you voted yes on this, you didn't consider that?
When the fee schedules went in?
Yeah, I considered that when I voted for it. But again, this is something that, since that time, many residents, again, that's what, we're supposed to be able to represent the residents.
We are.
And this is something that I'm trying to, again, make sure that you all understand that when this, if you're going to go through with this, you're effectively shutting down Morrisville Little League. And say what you will, but first of all, they have put a lot of money into the park, and the park looks beautiful. We're going to be getting another passive park when MR Ryder is torn down. So again, you just have to all be comfortable with the outcome of that. And again, if you've spoken to residents about this issue, you know this is not a black and white issue. This is not, rather, it is a black and white issue. Most of the residents don't want this to happen. So again, I just want to make sure that we're talking about what is really going to happen if you do this.
I don't think any of us want to see Little League go away.
Nope, we want to see them follow the rules.
No, we just want them to follow the rules.
Well, you can say, you know, you'd say it sweetly if you want, but the outcome is still going to be the same, that you're effectively driving them out if you do this. So again, you just have to be comfortable with doing that.
Unless we leave them there for free, give them as much land as they want, and turn a blind eye, everyone will be happy? Is that what you're saying? Because then make sure that you're telling the taxpayer that you're letting your park be annexed, because that is what's going to happen.
You're about letting the park be annexed. We had one representative from Little League come to one of our meetings, I believe about four months ago. Again, this was handled by the Athletic Committee, and I didn't, apart from the article that was in the newspaper, I didn't get any sort of feedback from the Athletic Committee. You're saying that they refused to meet with them? That's the first I'm hearing about it.
At this point, the Athletic Committee had met with them, the manager met with them, everybody was here for that, they all got the information, it was ignored. I think at this point, it shouldn't be the council being the banter back and forth. It should be the administration and the attorney that handles this, because it's a legal matter, this portion. They're on our land that we own and we take care of, and we're asking a simple thing that any other town does, which is to protect that land and put it for the use for everyone.
First of all, please don't yell at me. I'm again, just making sure this council's aware of what the outcome of this will be.
I'm aware.
Okay?
I still don't see why we can't have some direction given to the borough manager to continue negotiation.
All right, I'm asking right now.
How about this? Could I, would council be comfortable with me issuing a counterproposal?
Exactly.
For $10,000 to settle the past two years? And we'll take the 2018 season with the field reductions we've all been going back and forth about, and the $15 per borough registrant, and the $30 per outside borough registrant?
As long as that's taken care of upfront, along with the, all the paperwork that they're supposed to provide as well, prior to the season starting?
Can I suggest one minor change to that? And as if they have hardship cases, if they can prove it, that we don't charge the fees for those hardship cases?
They don't require.
Part of Little League is, there's a "Don't Ask, Don't Tell" policy. If it's hardship, there are no questions asked, and the child is allowed to play. They turn no one away.
Right, but what keeps them from saying they have 300 cases of hardships? Is there documentation? You don't need names and numbers, you need something? Do they turn something in Little League that says we have 30 hardship cases?
That's what's a headcount.
And they did say they're willing to provide their roster. Of course, it'll be redacted, it was appropriate.
Right, exactly. All right, so the only other thing then on this that I think should be addressed is tournaments. Tournaments are not part of the Little League. They're being run out of there, and it should come through the borough. And this tournament should come here. If they want them down there, we accommodate that, they should go through the management for that.
So tournaments are case by case with preapproval?
Right, they should be coming through the borough for that stuff, like any other borough would be. Last year, they weren't sure if they were going to have fall ball, that's separate from the Little League. I don't know how they feel about that, or what they're doing with that. The field stance would be about the same, and then they'd have to provide what that is. Later, they said they weren't going to have it, but I believe they still did.
I'm sorry, fall ball is what it's called?
Yeah, it's called fall ball. It's a separate, separate season is what it is. There's Little League fall ball, and then.
Well, we consider that like a tournament, case by case with preapproval.
The fall ball would have to be pre-approved if they're running a fall ball. That's a separate thing.
Separate issue.
And that was actually part of the fee schedule. If you look at it, it's in our fee schedule.
Don't start that yawning, whoever that was. So you're good with me going back to them with that? Okay, good.
Okay, is there anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.